Good evening. Welcome to the 2017 Candidates Forum sponsored by the Wallingford Community Women. I'm Jean McFarland, the program moderator. This segment features six of the 13 candidates running for the Board of Education. The first part of the program will consist of questions asked of the candidates by members of the local media, including the New Haven Register and the Record Journal, as well as students from Lyman High School and Mark T. Sheehan High School. The second part will allow each candidate to make a closing statement. During the question and answer portion of the program, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to a question. Each candidate will then have two and a half minutes after the questions from the press to make closing remarks. During that two and a half minutes, if the candidate wishes to address a question that was not asked directly of them, they have the opportunity to do that along with their closing remark. Before beginning the questioning, I'd like to introduce six of the candidates running for Board of Education. They are, from left to right, Kathy Costelli, Democrat; Erin Corso, Republican; Louis Zerwinski, Republican; Nick D'Agostino, Democrat; Shawna Glidden, Republican; and Patty Purcell, Democrat. Mr. Terrell, will you ask your first question of Ms. Costelli?
Good evening, Kathy. Would the district benefit from giving serious consideration to consolidating the two high schools into one high school?
Thank you for that question, Luther. First, I'd like to say thank you for putting on this forum to the Wallingford Community Women and for the reporters here, both from our newspapers and from our schools. Thank you very much. Also, the community at large, both here, present tonight, and those that will be watching at home. And to our technical staff, without whom which this program could not happen. Now, the question was combining the two high schools. It certainly has been a topic that has been brought up in the past. I personally feel that there are a lot of advantages of not doing that. We have the ability to offer our students, more students, similar opportunities, for example, sports, music, band, a plethora of opportunities that would not be available to as many students if the schools were combined. From a financial perspective, I don't know that anybody's actually run the numbers to see how much it could save or end up costing to do that. Remember that Lyman Hall has the Voeg wing that the state paid a good portion of. If we were to close Lyman Hall, we would have to then forego and repay the state for those funds. That would be a pretty big bucket. That would have to be included in whether or not it would be financially responsible to move to one high school. The other is finding a location that could house both sides of town. And, okay, I still have 30 seconds. The other reasons I would say not to combine them... No, I think I'm out of ideas. But I think, again, it could certainly be looked at, but we'd have to run the numbers and consider all those factors. Oh, the other thing was the other side of town. Sheehan has the pool. If we moved to Lyman Hall, we'd have to give up the pool. Thank you.
The next question, Sam Morgenstern to Erin Corso.
Good evening, Mrs. Corso.
Hi, Sam.
Throughout my education, I've seen educators on a spectrum, those that are very involved, very passionate about teaching, and those who seem to take it as a day job. My question to you is, how will you hold our educators to higher standards while still allowing them discretion in the classroom?
Thanks, Sam. That's a great question. First, thanks, thank you to everybody who came out tonight. Thank you to the Wallingford Community Women for hosting this forum. Sam, I'm not sure if you know, I'm an educator myself. We are all held to certain, I would say, pretty high standards in terms of evaluating, being evaluated by our administrators. But I agree with you, and I do see some complacency among my peers in education. And I think that targeted and targeted professional, individual professional development is key and inspiring complacent teachers. We can all just do the minimum to get by, but that's not the best that we can do. And so, when we really take a look at what our needs are, what our strengths are, but really what our needs are in terms of best educating students, I believe that targeted and individualized professional development to address weaknesses is the most important step in motivating complacent teachers.
The next question, Gretchen's side for Louis Zerwinski.
Good evening, Mr. Zerwinski. My first question for you is, do you think there is an overemphasis on athletics in our school system and not enough attention given to arts, theater, and music?
Thanks for the question, Gretchen. I'd also like to thank the Wallingford Community Women and everyone that's here tonight. So, to address your question, I think that all extracurricular activities are important. I would say that, you know, this is my first time running for the Board of Ed, so, you know, I still have to delve into the intricacies of, you know, where funding is going, if that's what the question is about, or if it's the general prioritization that's made by administration and so on. But I think that, you know, we should try to offer an eclectic grouping of extracurricular activities, and, you know, we may have to prioritize those based on what most students want, but I still think that we should have a diverse offering. Thank you.
The next question, Matt Saverek for Nick D'Agostino.
Hi, Nick. How are you?
How are you, Matt?
Good, good. With the town facing possible cuts to its ECS funding this fiscal year and potentially in coming years, what ideas do you have for how to handle any potential significant cuts in ECS?
You know, we're obviously facing cris- tough fiscal times, and we don't know what the current budget is going to be at the state level that ultimately will trickle down to us. So, you know, I think it's important to always be conscientious of what the budget may or may not do year in, year out. I think depending on what the cuts are, ideally, we don't have to impact direct student contact. That'd be my first thing to not impact. So, we can also look to other ways. So, if school funding is what comes from the state and we lose X number of dollars, maybe there's a way we can eat that up on the council side or on the other side of government by having them give us more to carry us through. We do have a pretty extensive rainy day fund that can offset some of the costs that we have, so we don't impact the quality of our education. You know, my whole motto in my campaign is, a town's only as strong as its school system. The minute we start jeopardizing that, we're going to jeopardize a lot more of our future. Good schools, good quality schools, good outcomes in schools, however you measure them, bring in new families. They bring in new people to Wallingford because they want their kids to get the quality of education that we currently have and have had for quite some time. You know, so I think every budget cut needs to be looked at to see who is impacted and how are they impacted, and to what gains does a town have by making those cuts. No cut is ever made easily. No cut is ever without thought and care. But I'd look to make cuts through attrition, through other means rather than cutting staff. I think the minute we start cutting staff, especially at the teacher level, we jeopardize the integrity of our school system. So, really looking at ways to strategically cut things without jeopardizing the impact on students. And I think we, as a town, given our fiscal, you know, reserve, I think we can do that successfully and be planful.
Okay. The next question, Luther, would you please ask it of Shawna Glidden?
Shawna, did the board make a mistake by not outsourcing its food service operations in the vote that was taken at the end of the last school year?
Thank you, Luther. That's a wonderful question. And thank you, Wallingford Community Women, for hosting us, and press, and everyone else for being here, especially you guys on a school night. So, I think it's too early to make that determination. It's very early in the school year. The numbers are looking promising. We have a really great director who's got some wonderful new ideas. We're serving fresh pizza. We're doing surveys of students and parents to see what they like, what they don't like, what changes could be made. We're all working collaboratively. I think you'll have a better, or we as a board and we as a community will have a better understanding of whether or not that was the wrong decision to make later on in the year. I personally don't think it was, given what we've seen just in the last two months. So, thank you.
Sam, would you please ask the next question of Patty Purcell?
Hi, Patty.
Hi, Sam.
With the current implementation of mastery-based learning into schools, how will you assist in creating a smooth transition to this difference policy ensuring that students' education is not harmed nor they put a disadvantage in the college search process?
Certainly. First, thank you to everybody who made this possible tonight and for attending. I think the biggest thing with mastery-based learning, and I can give you some history. The first part is separating the grades from the habits of work. My own children went through school here and did well in math here, and then when they went to college, they had to all take remediation. And at first, I thought it was just their situation, and then under research, I found out that they got great grades in math because they had nice neat notebooks and homework, and they did all those types of things, but they didn't necessarily know the content. And so, what happened is by doing that separation, it gives a chance to know, what's the intervention? Do you need help with one area or another area? It would help you, obviously, down the road, like my students, my children did. The other thing with mastery-based is it gives a better communication of what exactly the goals are for the students. It's better communication to the parents, what exactly you need to reach. It's, teachers always have taught to standards, but what I want to say is that it kind of narrows it down a little bit, and it gives you a chance to say, okay, this is what I need to show. And the other thing that's really nice about mastery-based is you might be able to show it in different ways. So, another example is my son did English, and he had to read Romeo and Juliet, and he didn't really want to do it, but he was able to show that he understood the content and the concept through music, because music was something he really enjoyed, and it was just, it made it exciting for him. So, I just think that mastery-based opens up the doors a lot more for students, and it gives a lot better communication to parents so that they understand what's happening and that when you go forward, you really know what you know.
Okay. We will start round two. Gretchen, would you please ask a question of Kathy Costelli?
Hi, Kathy.
Hi, Gretchen.
What is your opinion if a teacher directly calls the superintendent before consulting with the teacher or building principal? Should there be a stronger chain of command policy implemented?
Thanks for that question, Gretchen. I believe there is a chain of command in place now. If a student or a parent has a concern with a given teacher, that my first, or the first place to go is to that teacher. If the parent or student is not happy with the results of that meeting, they can then go on to the building's level, the principal, thank you. Word wasn't coming. Principal. If still no satisfaction, then yes, start reaching out to central office. But I think we have a process in place, and that is a process that I think will ultimately result in the best outcome. Certainly, our Dr. Menzo, our superintendent, has always had an open-door policy to everyone, but I truly believe the best process is to follow that chain of command first. Thanks.
Matt, would you please ask the next question of Erin Corso?
Hi, Erin. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. How would you approach your position on the board, given that your husband worked for the school system as an administrator? And do you think that presents any challenges or conflicts with your position?
So, somebody asked him that same question not long ago, and his response was, "I haven't been able to persuade her to do what I want her to do in the last 20 years, so I don't think that's going to start now." But in all seriousness, our role as a Board of Ed member is to discuss and set policy and discuss and set budget. In terms of overview, oversight, and evaluating personnel, that is not done by the Board of Education, and decisions that are made on a daily basis within the building are also not done by the Board of Education. So, next year, I will have students at two at Moses Y. Beach, I'll have one at Rock Hill, and I'll have one at DAG. And so, aside from my husband being at Lyman Hall, I have children in the school system, and I think some would argue that as parents, we would probably go to bat for our kids just as strongly. That being said, this is a local Board of Education race, and we all have personal ties to the school district, whether it's schools that we attended, whether it's children, whether it's spouses, whether it's whatever it may be, we all have really strong ties to schools. But as candidates or members of the Board of Ed, our role is district-wide, not school-wide. And like I said, there's really no specific everyday oversight for Board of Ed members and administrators in the district.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Louis Zerwinski?
Mr. Zerwinski, does the town of Wallingford spend too much or too little on educating its children?
Thanks, Luther. Well, the budget, the Board of Ed budget accounts for about two-thirds of the town budget, which I believe, from what I've seen, is middle of the road. I believe there's some towns that spend a higher percentage, some that may spend less. But I think it really comes down to value, and, you know, are we getting the best value for the money that we're spending and the best education that we can afford for the children of the town, for the resources and the dollars that we're allocating to it? So, I think it's a hard question to answer, especially for someone that's new to the Board. I certainly plan on diving deeper, and I've been fortunate enough to be surrounded by a number of great people that have brought me up to speed on some things that maybe I wasn't as familiar with. And I've certainly spent quite a bit of time researching on my own. But I always think that there's areas to improve, and whether that's adding certain programs or allocating funds in a certain manner. As far as whether we spend too much, I think we're kind of middle of the road, and I think that it's more about what we're getting for our money.
Sam, would you please ask the next question of Nick D'Agostino?
Hi, Nick.
Hey, Sam.
What are your opinions on expanding course leveling systems to middle schools and elementary schools? Along these lines, would you consider expanding gifted and talented programs within the elementary and middle schools?
And the first part was about talented and gifted as well? Yeah. Yeah, I think if we can maximize opportunities at all levels, if we create passion in education in the K through six or K through five, that's really important, because that passion will exceed itself, and middle school will compound exponentially in the high school. So, I am all for expanding gifted programs and encouraging other means of getting young people interested in reading, interested in science, interested in all the STEM fields, starting as early as we can. And I think that that's not just an investment today, it's an investment for our future. Thank you.
Gretchen, would you please ask the next question of Shawna Glidden?
Hi, Shawna.
Hi, Gretchen.
What would your plan be to improve the technology component in terms of classroom instruction and data collection and reporting?
Well, so, that's actually a really great question, and it's a lot of what we've been doing on the Board is an integration of technology. So, we have Watson coming out. We're beta-ing our programs right now. We're also moving, well, you know, we're using Google Classrooms a lot more frequently. We're using that not just to teach classes and give work and interact with students, but also to collect data. We're looking to go to a one-to-one ratio at some point in the near future for high school students with tablets. So, that's a really great way to integrate technology into what we're doing in the classroom. Power School is another way that teachers are using to track grades and track test scores. And once Watson's fully up and running, the resources that are going to be available and the way everything is going to be brought together is really going to change the way our teachers are able to, one, track student progress, two, be able to get resources, new and different resources, that relate to their subject matter or the areas of interest of their students, and three, be able to implement mastery and personalized learning. So, it's really exciting, and we're moving toward it, and it's something that I've been a strong advocate for.
Matt, would you please ask the next question of Patty Purcell?
Hi, Patty. How are you?
Hi, Matt.
So, several unions of school district employees have received wage increases in the last year as part of contract negotiations approved by the town. Given the fiscal challenges the town could face in the future, do you think the Board of Education should continue to give wage increases to unions in future negotiations? And do you think the town will reach a breaking point where it has to say no to wage increases?
Okay. Thanks, Matt. I've actually been on the negotiating team for the teachers through a couple of contracts, and it always does come down to salaries and medical expenses. When you go through that process, there's a couple of things that come into play. Can the town afford it, number one? Number two is, what is happening around the state and other districts at your same level? And all those things come into play, and you have to have some sort of reasonable wage increase that you would come forward with, because if you don't, it will go to mediation, it can go to arbitration, and if you're not anywhere in the realm of reality, it's not going to work. So, all those kinds of things have to come into play. Definitely, this whole budget thing is going to impact, you know, negotiations, whether it's teacher salaries, administrator salaries, anybody, and it's going to have to, there has to be a real reason why you go lower or go higher or whatever. So, I think it, I guess it's kind of a depends type of question on where we are at the time.
Okay. Luther, would you please ask the next question of Kathy Costelli?
Hi, Luther.
Hi, Kathy. Is there a need to make a greater effort at retaining administrators in the district? And if so, how would you go about doing that?
I assume your question is based on the fact that we turn over administrators routinely, as all other districts do as well. That's the goal. The goal is to grow these people so that they can move on in their career paths. Having an administrator, having, let's say, assistant superintendent stay three years is about the norm throughout the state, and I think we fall pretty much in line with that. There are certain other circumstances that force people or encourage people to move on to another position. It might be something that they find that's closer to their home base. Remember, a lot of our administrators, most of them, are out many evenings a week, and if they can find a position equivalent to, or even an upgrade to the one they're in presently, and save themselves another hour or so of travel, allowing them that much more family time, I don't see any reason why those people shouldn't move on into those positions. I think we, I think our administrative turnover is as it should be.
Sam, would you please ask the next question of Erin Corso?
Hi, Erin. As a senior right out of my SAT and ACT prep, I believe that Wallingford schools could do more to help prepare students inside and outside the classroom by making more standardized test prep accessible to students, whether it be in the classroom or an extracurricular program. How would you ensure that Wallingford students are adequately prepared in this regard for college selection and standardized test prep?
So, both college selection and standardized test prep? It's an interesting question, Sam. So, the new revised SAT aligns itself with the Common Core, and the gentleman that's in charge of the College Board happened to be the author of the Common Core. So, conveniently, the new SAT is aligned with the Common Core. In Wallingford, our curriculum is also aligned with the Common Core. So, in theory, things that you are doing in your classes and the rigor that you're taking within your high school classes should align very well with the SAT and the ACT. That being said, and I tell students this all the time, I'm a school counselor in Ansonia at the high school, and I tell students all the time, would you go into your driver's test without having studied? The answer is usually no, or without having practiced. The answer is usually no, and I advise my students the same thing. So, there are some very expensive tutors and programs out there, but there are also some very, very good free programs, one being Khan Academy. So, Khan Academy also has a partnership with the College Board for preparation for the SAT. So, I would encourage, and I believe our counselors in the high schools do this, I would encourage our students to use and utilize the free resources that are available before turning to tutors and programming. That being said, there are cases where kids need some extra preparation in terms of those tests, but when it comes to college selection, those things should be vetted out with guidance counselors, hopefully, starting at ninth or 10th grade.
Gretchen, would you please ask the next question of Louis Zerwinski?
Hi, Louis.
Hi, Gretchen.
My question is, if elected, how do you plan on improving the communication with parents in the community in terms of letting them know what's going on in the Wallingford school system?
That's a good question. I mean, we live in such a connected world today that, you know, I think, from what I've seen, being on some of the social media platforms and so on, that there seems to be a pretty good dialogue going on between a lot of folks. I know that we have an online system through the Board of Education where parents can go on and look at scheduling and, you know, other items. Can we improve? There's always room for improvement. I think we have to look at, you know, all the available options, and technology is always changing. I mean, we've all bought the computer, and then a year later, you know, it's time to throw it in the trash and get a new one because it's out of date. So, I think especially as it relates into our world today, that changes, it seems, more rapidly than ever. I think technology may be our best resource for communication and couple that with face-to-face meetings with teachers and counselors and so on. Thank you.
Matt, would you please ask the next question of Nick D'Agostino?
Hi, good, Nick.
Hello.
A risk behavior survey given to Wallingford High School students in 2015 showed that 13% of students seriously considered suicide in the last 12 months, and 7% of students actually attempted suicide in the last 12 months. If you're elected, what measures would you propose to make sure that students have the mental health support and resources they need?
I think that's a really pressing question and a really important one. Those numbers are, I think if it's 1%, it's too high, so 13 and 7 is clearly way too high. And so, part of it stems from what supports do we have in the school currently and what's working, what's not. And so, I think those surveys are extremely important, because they give us a data set for us to create strategy around and to wrap around services. I think there has to be other public partners involved with this. The local and state health agencies can certainly help us. Being connected with our students is really critical, making sure that all of our teachers and staff have the mental health first aid. It's a 101 on how to assess changes in behavior. If we're not attuned to that, we're not going to recognize the signs until it's too late, and then we say, oh, gosh, I did notice this, or I did notice this. And so, I think we need to be more forthright in our assessments of changes in behavior. Sometimes they're routine. We have things that are challenging, but sometimes we really need to monitor them. So, I think having every personnel person, every person in each school trained to at least assess the to, to at least assess the baseline. If there's a change, then, then, then we certainly need to address it. If, if, if mental health is an issue of our kids, and sometimes it can be because of substance abuse, it could be family dynamics, it could be strictly mental health, it could be related to bullying. So there's lots of factors that, that, that lead to increased risk for suicides. But we certainly need to make sure that every student has the support they need during the time they're with us, and hopefully we can build in some community and family supports if, if a student continues to struggle around that. But I think we need to invest in suicide prevention efforts more than necessarily we are, and to really train all of our staff to be aware.
Luther, would you please ask the next question of Shauna Glidden?
Shauna, is there one area within the current Wallingford educational experience that you think needs strengthening?
So one, okay. I think that where we need to focus a lot of our efforts right now is English and math at the lower levels, okay? They're the building blocks and the foundation for education further on. And if you don't leave third grade without being able to read or perform basic math skills, you've kind of put yourself in a really bad situation, and we as educators have put our students in a bad situation. So what I'd like to see is a different approach to elementary education. I think right now what we're asking our teachers to do is a lot. We're asking them to be experts in English, experts in math, in civics, in science, and it's, it's, it's really, you can't be a jack-of-all-trades and do it effectively. So I think that a new approach, or a different approach, would be maybe changing that and doing partner teaching. So have a teacher who is an expert in English, and then partner with a teacher who's an expert in math, and have your students switch, or have the teachers switch. We should also look at, and we're doing this right now with the personalized and the mastery-based learning, but we should look at maybe restructuring the way we comprise our classrooms, because we're asking a teacher to teach to this level up here in English, and then other students who maybe are really, you know, not grasping the basic concepts of reading. And that's a lot too. So maybe putting kids on tracks. Not necessarily grouping them by everybody who's on a lower ability level together, but maybe mixing them up, but so that it's not so diverse within one classroom. I think those are some areas where we could focus and maybe see more progress and more forward motion than we are currently.
Sam, would you please ask the final question of Patty Purcell?
Hi Patty.
Hi again.
As a student with stake in my community, I think that events such as this are excellent opportunities for students and members of the community. My question to you is, how would you expand opportunities such as this in keeping the community and students specifically involved in a dialogue between us and the Board of Ed?
Thank you for that question. I don't know if you realize, but I was part of the first innovation team here in the district, and one of the biggest things that we walked away with was building community and bringing it into the schools. One of the activities we did is we got students and parents and community leaders and educators to come up with the core values. You can see them like right here on the sign over here. It was awesome to do that. We started a townwide read. We brought in, again, students and community members into the schools and did help do professional development with teachers. I've taught in the district my most, almost entire career, and I think it's really important for students to have a voice and the community to have the voice, and we are all responsible and have different ways that we can support each other. And I think, I love that you're doing this. I think we need more representation, students coming more to the board meetings, the town meetings, and getting involved, and I applaud that you put yourself forward to do this. I appreciate it. And I think opening the doors is a wonderful thing. I mean, for too many years, I think teaching used to be a teacher in a classroom like here, and I think we really need to get more parents, more community, more leaders involved. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the question and answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have two and a half minutes to make a closing statement or address a question that was not directly asked of them. Ms. Costelli, would you please start?
Yes, thank you. And again, thank you to the Wallingford Community Women, and for everyone here in attendance and those that will be watching this on TV for showing an interest in your Board of Ed candidates and helping you decide on who you feel would best service you. For those of you that don't know me, I have lived in Wallingford almost 40 years now. I raised five children here, all of whom I'm very proud, and all who still live in Wallingford. Actually, one teaches in the school system. We have family dinner every Sunday at my house. Still something we try. Not everybody can make it, but we try to state those core values of family and the importance of it. I refer to my TLCs, that's my tolerance, my love, my commitment, and my stability for my family. And I think those same traits can carry over into my role as a Board of Ed member. I've served for 10 years consecutively on the board, and I have some history and some experience that I can bring to the table should you choose to elect me again. I serve on a lot of the subcommittees. I like to roll up my sleeves and help out where needed. I'm on the Policy Committee, I'm the Mastery-Based Learning Committee, the Education Council Committee, that's the committee that selects the school calendar, and I serve on all of the union negotiation contracts. There's seven of those, and typically, three are running at any one point, one year, within a year, there's three always in, in motion. I come with no agenda. I like to listen. I like to hear what other people have to say. I like to make informed decisions before making a decision. And I want it to always be in the best interest of the students, but also with realistic implementation expectations. I want to make sure that whoever's impacted, whatever resources are impacted, be it the teachers, or the parents, or the administrators, the clerical staff, the custodians, the facility guys, whoever, the food services, whoever is impacted, I want to make sure we give them the tools and the time to be successful. Because ultimately, if they're not successful, our students won't be successful, and that needs to be at the forefront always. I hope I can count on your vote on November 7th. Please come out and vote, and thank you for your time.
Okay. Next, Ms. Corso.
Thank you. And once again, thank you everybody for organizing this forum tonight. I'm a lifelong resident of Wallingford. I grew up down at the corner of High Street and North Elm Street. As a young child, I ran amok through Choates Campus. Here was a mess, wild, free, in a time that's far different from what our children are experiencing now. I went to Moses Yai, I went to Dag, I went to Lyman Hall, and when I got married, actually after college, I returned to teach here, I taught at Moran. And we, when we got married and started our family, we returned straight back to Wallingford to raise our family, because I can't think of a better place to do that. So I love Wallingford. I talk often how it's a very big, small town. Everybody seems to know everybody in some sort of capacity. So when I think about my, our school system, and the school system that will raise my children, and I think about the parents, my, my friends, and parents that are, you know, with, with our kids in, in school, and I think about some qualities of our generation of parents, we are different than our parent, than our own parents. We are a little bit more cynical, and we are a little bit more of a consumer generation than my own mother who would, you know, is very brand loyal. So that being said, I think in terms of the quality of education that we're producing on a fiscally irresponsible budget, and I think it's very important in this time of fiscal uncertainty, that we can preserve what we love most about our school system without sacrificing the good things in our school system. I think class sizes are very important. I think us graduating students that are either prepared for college, that are prepared for the workforce, or prepared for a career in the military and our armed forces, is very, very important. But I also think it's very important that we have, that, or that we build not only relationships with our community, but trusting relationships within our community. Thank you.
Mr. Surinski?
I wanted to thank everyone for putting this together, thank the Wallingford Community Women, the students here, and the reporters here today, and everybody out here in the crowd, and those who may watch this after, afterwards. So a little background on myself. I graduated from Western New England College with a BSVA in Finance, helped start an investment services program for a community bank down in Fairfield County. I also run a wealth management practice here in town on South Main Street. So why vote for me? So the board had, you know, any good board has an eclectic group of people with different ideas, skill sets, thoughts and opinions, and I believe my skill set translates well into the board. Being in wealth management, I help people achieve their goals and help them identify their needs, wants, and wishes. I help them put solutions in place to achieve these goals. But often overlooked, I help keep these people on track, a, you know, financial trainer, if you will. My wife and I chose to call Wallingford our home because we love it here. I, like many of you, have a vested interest in my wife as well, as a taxpayer, to keep our taxes in check, but we also want to provide the best education we can afford. And some of you may know that we're expecting a daughter in December, so you could say I have a vested interest. Some people may not see me as an educator. I realize that, I would disagree. I educate my clients and businesses on a daily basis about how to save, grow, and protect their money, so that they can achieve and attain their needs, wants, and wishes. So if you think that that is something that would be valuable to the Board of Ed, I would ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Thank you. I'll start off by thanking everyone here tonight. I want to thank the Wallingford Community Women for putting this on and giving us an opportunity to, to, to share our perspectives, to answer tough questions that are pressing to, to what's important for Wallingford, what's important for education. I want to thank our two student reps. I think you played an important role tonight, and I am in awe over your leadership here tonight, and the local media. I think media matters, and I think that the questions they ask are, are always important, and what they report on is essential for keeping a transparent system in all aspects of government. So in terms of who I am, and I'll go as briefly as possible, I'm a lifelong resident of Wallingford. I'm a proud product of this school system. I come from, I'm a third generation on my father's side, I'm a second generation on my mother's side. We are a Wallingford family, and we continue to be a Wallingford family. In terms of what this school system gave me, it gave me the foundation I needed to pursue a bachelor's degree, to pursue a really wonderful career in equal opportunity and diversity, and to ultimately pursue a master's degree in council ed, education. I attribute so much of where I am today to the foundation of this school system here, and that's why I, I think it's really important that we have voices on this board who are, who recognize that, who are going to enhance that and continue to produce amazing outcomes for our young people. Regardless of what their outcomes are, whether it's a high school to work, whether it's high school to college, high school to the armed services, we need to empower our young people to take on leadership roles in, in, in their adult lives. In terms of who I am as, as, as an employee, I work for Central Connecticut State University in their diversity office. I monitor the hiring and recruitment processes for most searches that happen through our, through our office. I'm an investigator by trade, so I look at everything from, from, from the microscope level, what's happening here and now, to the telescope level, what's the impact on the broader community and, and campus. So we can't just focus on every issue as if it's happening in a vacuum. We have to look at everything from a very global, who's impacted, what is the impact, and what is the impact on the overall quality of our school? You know, I, I hope to give a voice of reason and balance to this board, and I think that when we look at budgets and cuts, it's not just always about money, it's, 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 there's so many other things, so many other costs, that, that, that can be in jeopardy outside of the financials, and we need to be very cautious while responsible in terms of the cuts that we make. And I plan to be that, that, that voice and advocate for our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Glidden?
Well, thank you all again, Wallingford Community Women, for putting this on. This is really the only opportunity we have to reach out to the public and have kind of everyone together to tell our differences and what we believe in. And thank you for asking the questions tonight. I know it's a school night one, and two, it's kind of late, so thank you. I'm a mother of three, all right? So I have a vested interest in our education system here in school, and it's important to me, not just as a mother, but also as a taxpayer, that our students are being prepared for life outside of high school. I mean, that's really what the job of, of school is, right? It's to make sure that whatever our students choose, when they leave us, they're prepared, whether that be for college, or a trade, or military. So how do we do that, especially in these fiscally challenging times? I mean, I think that's the biggest question, right? There's no more money, and we might not even get what we currently have. So how are we going to achieve this really huge task of preparing these people to be contributing adults in our society? So I think that what we have to do is we have to approach it from a bunch of different ways. We have to look at early education, because it's very important. That's going to set up our students for success. Not all of our students come to us for early education, so we have to make sure that we are able to implement programs that address maybe some of those shortcomings, or also keep them challenged if they're above what we currently offer. I think our school system is on the right path with that, with the mastery base and the personalized learning. But then we also have to take it a step further. We have to look at what we're offering for our high school students. Not every student is set up to become a college student, right? We're not all interested in being teachers necessarily, or going on to some other field that requires a four-year degree. Maybe they want to be a plumber, or an electrician, or they want to join the armed forces, or they're into computer programming and don't necessarily need that degree because it's where their skills lie. I think that when we look at high school, we have to start thinking about it more as kind of a college program, where we offer the basics, and everybody has to take the basics, but we offer more diversity of choice, so that students can explore potential career opportunities and get educated in those, so they're more competitive on a college level and on an employment level. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Purcell?
Hi. I too would like to thank the Wallingford Community Women and everyone that is asking questions that has come here tonight. I think what I'd like people to know about me is that I have 29 years of educational experience, most of those are right here in Wallingford. I've done curriculum, I've done policies, I've written grants, I've done professional, led professional development workshops, I've organized events in the community and the schools, and I've not only done that just here in Wallingford, I've done it at the national level and at the state level. I had an opportunity to have one year, Wallingford invested in me, and they let me go for one year as an innovation team, and during that year, I visited all kinds of schools in and out of the state. I tried to get into nearly every classroom in the schools to see what kind of innovation was happening. We took red books, we went to conferences, and I brought back all that information to the district, and some of it's starting to take shape. But I have a lot of expertise that Wallingford's already invested that time with me, and I'd like to be able to get that opportunity to give it back. In addition, when I was a Wallingford Teacher of the Year, I was asked to be at the State Department of Ed, so I get to spend a year at the State Department, and I worked with legislators, and I worked with college prep programs, and I worked with policymakers and, and new teacher programs in districts all around the state, and I have that experience I can bring to it. But the main thing I'd say, if you asked me the first, the top three things, is definitely my experience. Number two would be the fact that I've already brought innovative things into Wallingford. I already know how to roll them out, I already know how to bring them forward. And three would be that I have, I've been known in the district as a person who speaks up. I stand up for the rights of kids. I believe that I will always do that, no matter who's on the other side, but I'm also a person who's known that brings consensus, so that I can sit down and kind of get both sides to think together, and we have some tough decisions coming forward. But I do think it's really But I do think it's really, really important to have someone who's been in the district, who's been through the trenches here, who can relate to the students, the parents, the teachers. I've had a, I've been a parent in the district, I'm a taxpayer here, and a teacher, and I think the perspectives that I can bring, the knowledge I can bring, I think will really benefit overall. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes Part 1 of the 2017 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind you to vote on November 7th.